I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gals Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location, you know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry in this, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some, you know, strong investment opportunities, for sure.
Well, my name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Orchestra of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal, so I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nine to Two Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears, you don't put earbuds in, and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, bootcamps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger, and a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home, and there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gals Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so, you know, we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location, you know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry in this, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some, you know, strong investment opportunities, for sure.
Well, my name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Orchestra of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal, so I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nine to Two Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears, you don't put earbuds in, and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, bootcamps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger, and a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home, and there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order, and welcome our, well, we always have tons of people here. Welcome everyone. Just a reminder that town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaq, which is the unceded ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and is a privilege for us to be here. There is, in addition to our agenda, indigenous consultation for federal funding opportunities. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Very none. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda's amended? Counselor Thorburn, thank you. Seconded by Counselor Tanner. All those in favor. Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Announcements. Are there any announcements from members of council? Counselor Tanner? No?
No, no, no.
Okay. I just want to thank all the folks that came out to the two-week celebration, two-weekend celebration for the town's birthday. So we had our Winterlude event, and one outdoors, one indoors. And as this was kind of our first kind of go-arounds at that, we'll think a lot of people enjoyed it, and we'll see what happens next year, maybe change it up a little bit and spice it up a little bit. So thank you all the staff and volunteers that gave their time to put that event together, and all the members of the public that came out. If there's no other announcements, then we'll move down to our first item, which is our presentation of the 2022 Built Heritage Award for 581 King Street. Come on down to the podium.
For those who don't know me, my name is Mike Williams, and I'm on the Heritage Advisory Board, and I'm here to present the Built Heritage Recognition Award for this year. We present it every year, and this year, we decided to give it to 581 King Street. Greg Smith is representing Black Bay Investments. The building was brought back to very close to its original form. This was done intentionally, and I think it really shows what an outfit can do when they come into town and do renovations, invest in these older properties, and for that, I mean, I think it's great. And I'd like to present you with this plaque and the thanks of our community.
Thank you very much, Jim. Just a very quick couple of words. Mitchell and council, on behalf of Adam Barrett and Black Bay Real Estate Group, we're extremely proud of this award. It's a very prestigious award. We know there are a lot of wonderful things happening in Bridgewater and area, and we're excited to be a part of that. This is just one step in a number of other things we hope to be able to do in this town. We are happy to be able to partner with the town and council. So thank you very much, Jim. Mike, thank you very much. For, Mike and Jim, I should say, for this prestigious honor. We will be placing this on the outside of the building, and it will stay there hopefully for a very long time, and we're very proud to display that. So thank you so much.
Thank you, and congratulations.
I think I will probably take our plaque and enjoy the rest of the week.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you. And thank you to the volunteers on the Heritage Advisory Committee for the work that they do, not just in giving out these awards, but there's a lot of work that goes into that, and they give a lot of their time, so thank you so much.
Take care, guys.
Okay, so I'm going to do a little, a couple of housekeeping items, just because there are lots of members of the public here. So the next item that we normally do is ask for if there's any members of the public that wish to speak to council to address issues as a delegation. If you're here for the Lot 102 on Glen Allen, after we deal with a couple of items, there's going to be a public hearing. That would be your time to speak to, there'll be an opportunity for the public to speak to that topic. So I just want to clarify that. So when I ask if there's any members of the public that wish to address council, that's the long-winded way of saying for anything other than the property matter on Glen Allen. So I'll just kind of give you an opportunity. If you have any other matters you wish to address with council, you can come to the podium. Not seeing anyone moving, so we'll just keep moving along here. So before us, we have the minutes of February 13th, 2023 council meeting. Are there any errors or omissions with those? Hearing none. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes? Deputy Mayor Fager, seconded by Counselor Conklin. All those in favor. Opposed, motion is carried. All right, now we're going to move into our public hearing. So before we do, the first thing is I will adjourn, adjourning the council meeting. We'll go into a public hearing, we'll go through the public hearing, we will return to the council meeting. It sounds like a long process, but it's the one that we're required to follow. I'd like to note that all the public participation advertising and statutory requirements have been met. Just again, for housekeeping, members of council may question each speaker. Speakers will be limited to one presentation. However, council may call upon a speaker for additional comments. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes each. Each speaker needs to state their name and address for the record, and questions from the floor will be directed to council, not to staff or individuals. And you do have to come to the podium to speak, because we do live stream these meetings, so we do need to be able, for the public watching at home, to hear. As the hearing kind of progresses, there's a number of stages. So we're going to start with an overview by the planner, followed by a presentation from the applicant if they so choose. After that, I will ask if there are any members of the public that wish to make comment, and we kind of do those in order. We start with those who are in favor, then those opposed, and then finally, any other comments. I will give closing remarks. We'll close the public hearing, return to council session where council will make a decision. So with that, I will turn it over to Mike to walk us through.
Good evening, council, members of the public. Again, this evening to talk to you about a proposed lot sale on Glen Allen, specifically Lot 102. A quick outline, I'm providing some updates, providing a short outline of the SOTA proposal and a short outline of Lot 102, looking at the land sale process, and then getting into some of the compliance enforcements and next steps. So the first piece are some clarities from the council report, as I found on council's website. We've added some clarity around when the units will be built. This is from the province about how the timing will work for the funding and the construction and whatnot. We want to make sure that there was enough time for the first units to be built, so that's that first change. Second change is really around discussions for the long-term affordability piece. I'll be getting into that later in the presentation. So details on the proposed development will be provided by SOTA, specifically around funding. The discussions to date have been looking at four to five modular triplexes with 14-plus units and the potential for office space. A note, this presentation will discuss what could go wrong with this proposed land sale at length. This isn't a criticism of SOTA or that we suspect that there's something wrong. We are doing our due diligence as a town to ensure that we are sure that this is the best way forward. So Lot 102 is located on Glen Allen Drive. It's roughly 1.5 acres, 120 meters fronting onto Glen Allen, and roughly 45 meters deep. It's currently designated to limited commercial and zoned C7 neighborhood commercial, which is, limits the site to only have a few residential options. Site is currently serviced with water and partially graded and cleared. The site may appear as you drive past it that has been fully cleared and graded. It has, there's some spots in the back that have not, and it drops off quite severely. This is the location of Lot 102 on Glen Allen Drive. A note that it is separated from the adjacent land uses, including Centennial Trail. There's the entrance to HB Studios and a utility right away, I believe, to the south of the property along the trail, so their adjacent properties are all owned by the town. The land sale process, there's a process the town must follow. In this will government act disposes of land that is valued over $10,000 but is being sold for below market value. Some of those criteria from the act include that it must be sold to a nonprofit carrying out an activity beneficial to the town, such as affordable housing, must be advertised for two weeks, must hold a public hearing, which is occurring tonight, and the motion approving the sale must be passed by two-thirds of council. If council approves the sale, further discussions on conditions will be finalized and brought to council prior to conveying the land to SOTA. For those who maybe aren't familiar with our land sale process, conveying is the final step. So we would enter into an agreement to purchase, but we will not execute that agreement by conveying title until we're sure that all of the conditions have been met. Compliance and enforcement. When I say compliance, I'm referring to ensuring that conditions are followed and reported. So this will most likely mirror requirements that funders provide. So CMHC and the province may ask SOTA to provide certain information, but to ensure that the units have been used as affordable housing. We would mirror those wherever possible through this bureaucracy and red tape with SOTA, so they only have to provide one report instead of providing multiple reports. And that would also give us an insight into what the funders are looking at. For enforcement, what I mean by that is it's looking at actions resulting from noncompliance. This one is where things potentially get tricky in the long term. So compliance and enforcement in the short term, quickly, there is submitting of a business plan, which will be part of the agreement of purchase and sale, provide details on the financial estimates, operations, and how the project will be overseen in the long term. As I mentioned earlier, the site is currently zoned C7, neighborhood commercial. The zoning would need to change to enable the proposed development, and there'll be some more on that in an initiation report later this evening. Successful subdivision, the land we're also looking to subdivide so that each of those triplex, proposed triplexes can be on its own lot. This enables the town to potentially buy back the lots if they aren't built on. So the more longer-term pieces are to build 14 affordable housing units in phases over four years. The details are currently being looked at. First occupancy, we're hoping for within one year of conveyance, and all 14 units within four years. We need to define the phases a bit more clearly prior to conveyance. Part of that comes down to the specifics around the project. Are we going with triplexes, fourplexes? How many are the door, and how many can we fit on the site, how big they are, and so on. So those details are still being determined. Another compliance and enforcement component is the disclosure of funding agreements. So SOTA would need to disclose any of the funding agreements that they have in part so that we can ensure administrative ease and no overlaps with enforcement. Lastly, is the one that I keep mentioning, the ongoing affordability piece. That one is, discussions are still ongoing. We're looking at different ways of working with the province and with the federal government on how to ensure that this will remain affordable for the long term and not just be built, used briefly, and possibly sold. So there are a number of tools for compliance and enforcement, holding the conveyance of the land. As I mentioned, some of the fundamental conditions such as rezoning and funding might would need to be met. The conveyance of land comes at the very end, just before title transfers to the applicant. The buyback agreement would ensure that the buildings are constructed within the specified time, and that the town may buy back the lands. So say, for example, five lots were carved up to good five triplexes. Only two of them were funded, and the other three lots were never built on. The town could take those three lots back and pursue another project. Covenant and contract approach, those are, that's the ongoing, long-term piece. So potentially putting a covenant on title which would travel with the land, so that even if ownership changed, the land would still be required to be affordable housing. So we're still looking into those, those sorts of use of a covenant and contract agreements are still fairly, so we're still looking into the legal approaches around that. Long-term compliance and enforcement, the buyback will no longer apply once a building is complete. This prevents the town from winding up with a partially built building or potentially owning the building. So that would be not an option. Penalties for noncompliance are difficult. There's overlapping enforcement and determining what a fair penalty is. If the units aren't used as affordable housing, what happens next is the big question. We are still looking into that piece, but we have a number of ideas and are working closely with the plans. So we recommend that council approve the execution of the agreement of purchase and sale of Lot 102 to SOTA with the following conditions to be satisfied prior to conveying: submission of a business plan, including funding for the project, successful rezoning, successful subdivision, entering into a buyback agreement, and entering into a covenant agreement. The short-term objectives are the key ones that need to be met up at the top. Our next steps will be to initiate the re-designation and rezoning if the vote later goes successfully, and to continue discussions with SOTA to flush out further details. The re-designation and rezoning would need to be, proceed to, for SOTA to apply for the Rapid Housing Initiative funding, the RHI from CMHC. Further conversations are likely going to be focused on the specifics and details, number of units, location, and the long-term compliance component.
Any questions from members of council, of the planner? Counselor Caldwell?
The, so the covenant and the contract details need to be worked out. Does the, do those come back to council for final approval?
Yes. Counselor Conklin?
Excuse me. Is this common where we would not know what the covenant contract approach would be prior to proving land sale?
So this kind of covenant is very different than many others we enter into. Town enters to covenants for various different reasons, but to entering in one for affordable housing is pretty unique. We're still looking across the province to see if anybody else has done it this way. There are some examples out there, but there's not many. This is a very new approach for regard to that.
Any follow-up?
Yeah.
Thanks.
The buyback agreement, so when do we anticipate having something in place for that?
The buyback agreement, we're still looking at how many units are going to be built, because we need to know how many lots there are going to be, so we know how many lots will be potentially buying back. So there's still those pieces there about how many lots are going to be carved out. Many of these questions will be answered once we figure out how many units we're working with.
Okay. Do we typically know the buyback agreement prior to a sale?
Yes, that would also be coming back to council as well.
Yes, so the land won't be conveyed till after we have all that information?
Yeah, I was just going to say that the agreement of purchase and sale would specify that those, those two agreements would have to be agreed to by both parties prior to closing, so we would satisfy that. Some of the, like, when you look at provincial funding for affordable housing, some of the covenants that they look at are almost like a loan, that you forgive so much each year. So those are options that we're exploring, where we look at the value of the land, and basically spread that over four years, or 10 years, 20 years, whatever we decide, for a term that's acceptable to council to ensure it's affordable, and look at forgiving portions of that over that period of time. So if they stop becoming affordable, then there's a penalty for that. But again, subject to council's approval and acceptance by the other party.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Thorburn?
Yeah, when those lots are given or sold...
Yeah, when those lots are given or sold for the dollar, will it be subdivided in four lots at that time?
We're not sure how many lots, but it will be subdivided at that time.
It would be in lots, so if they just develop on Lot 1, 2, and 3 can be bought back.
Yeah.
So it won't just be sailed, one piece of land, it will be subdivided before construction. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, is the applicant to SOTA here to speak, represented from SOTA?
Hi again, Siobhan Doyle. I chair SOTA's board, and unfortunately, our CEO is not in Nova Scotia today. So I did come and I might be able to answer a question. I'm only here just to make sure that things go smoothly, and if there's anything that I can do to make that happen, then that's great. But I'm more going to just be reporting back to the board to say whether SOTA was successful and getting this started, so, yeah.
Okay. I don't know if anyone in council has any questions at this time for the applicant? No?
Okay.
Okay. Now, if there's any members of the public that wish to speak to this matter, we're going to start, as I said before, we're going to start with those who, if anyone's in favor and wishes to address council, please come down to the podium and don't forget to note your name and address. Come on down?
My name is Robert Boudreaux, and I'm a member of the Society of St. Vincent de Paul. I've been such a member for the past 14 years. Generally, this is a charitable organization, and we're basically just a small organization, but the focus of our organization is to help our neighbors in need within the Lumberburg County. And we've done that in the past years, basically helping with quite a number of things, but one of the major issue that we've issued, that we've seen, is people can't afford their rent. So in our case, what we've seen, especially in the past four years, is that we have a lot of individuals, homeless people, you know, that have no place to go, and basically we're forced to put them in for one or two nights in a motel. But that's not really a good way to do that. So we certainly, you know, see that there's quite a need, you know, to have, you know, more housing. And this, you know, from what the South Shore Open Door Association does, basically is they find places for these people, you know, to have a home and a roof over their head. So that's why, you know, from my point of view, I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak in favor? Come on down and state your name, please.
Hello, my name is Robert Young, and I live at 144 Victoria Road, apartment 106 there, which is a Black Bay property. My wife and I moved there in July because my wife used to live in Chester and has a disability and can no longer get into her home in and out on a regular basis easily. So we moved to Bridgewater to be near the LC-LC for her to have exercise with the swimming pool there. And we're both on CPP disability, so we have very little funds to really play with a lot. So like, by the time we pay rent, we have very little, have anything left for other things, like what we have, unfortunately, termed food as extra. So I go out almost every morning when the weather's nice to go around to the grocery stores and see what I can find that's cheap. So that's important for the, the reason I'm saying that is because this kind of a project would be a godsend to my wife and I, for example, or anything similar to it in the community, like co-ops or anything like that to come in the future, because rent everywhere has gone skyrocketing, almost just as much here as you see in Halifax, where I originally moved from a couple of years ago now. That's all I wanted to say about it.
Thank you. Is there any other folks that wish to come down? Come on down?
Actually, I have more of a question, and that is, what's the definition of affordable housing in this case? Like, what does it mean? Will it meet the needs that the previous two speakers mentioned? That's my question.
Yeah, so I'll ask staff to come to the podium and help answer your question, yep. And a great question, by the way.
Yes, absolutely, it's a great question. So the proposed units are currently proposed to be rent geared to income.
Can you speak just a little bit louder?
Oh, sorry. So the units are expected to be rent geared to income units, so that means the people in them will pay 30% of whatever their income is. So it's geared to the person, how much they make. So the rents will vary quite a bit. They will match the town's proposed definition of affordable housing, which is $700 for a one-bedroom, $800 for a two-bedroom, and $900 for a three-bedroom plus. That's a draft, by the way, the town's proposal. All the conversations we've had with SOTA have been about rent geared to income, and all units will be rent geared to income, not a portion.
What's that last part?
So the rent geared to income would be all of the units, all 14 of the units or more. It wouldn't be a portion of it.
Any other folks who wish to speak in favor of the proposal? Okay, not seeing any hands. Is there anyone who is opposed that wishes to address council? Come on, yeah, sure.
Good evening, everybody, members of council and everyone in attendance. My name is Greg Huskelson. I'm a mechanical engineer by trade, and I've lived, I have been a proud Bridgewater resident since 2018. I live at 522 Glen Allen Drive, just a few houses up from Lot 102, and I wanted to have the opportunity to respectfully voice a few of my concerns as a resident. I have three main concerns. First, the sale below market value. I don't quite understand why this is a necessary step in this project. On Glen Allen and the surrounding area, there are at least four new builds in addition to the 444 unit development at 654 Glen Allen, and I believe 50% of that is dedicated to affordable housing. Also, there has been a recent rise in vacant land sales in the area, according to Viewpoint. None of these builders needed below-market sales for their lands, and none of them needed rezoning. It goes to show that there is no shortage of private developers who are willing to invest in the area. In the SOTA proposal, there is an indication that this project will be heavily subsidized by federal and provincial governments, as well as a willingness by the town to give SOTA tax-exempt status. So I ask, considering the level of new development in the Glen Allen area and the level of proposed funding for this project, why does the town of Bridgewater need to gift this quarter-million-dollar piece of prime real estate to the pursuit of affordable housing? And I have questions in here, I don't know if I should ask them and wait for a response or...
Well, if you can just go through them all and then we'll...
Yep, happy.
Perfect.
Oh, wherever. If we are going to provide support to an affordable housing project, is there no other town-owned lands that would truly benefit with this level of support, located in an area that isn't already booming with development activity? Are there any properties in an underdeveloped part of town where the benefit can be maximized that isn't normally attractive to developers? I could not find a map like this that had specific examples. I don't know if it exists. Maybe a list of town-owned lands, does that exist? Oh, okay, I'll have to look harder. I acknowledge that the SOTA proposal states that there has been no interest in the land in eight years, but that was, that has been at current zoning and at market price, or at market rate. I can imagine that many companies would jump at a deal proposed like this. Secondly, I take issue with the incomplete picture of the project and rezoning. As per the proposal, SOTA has not signed with the developer, has no building designs, no business case, and has not secured provincial or federal funding. In fact, it appears that without the land ownership, SOTA cannot even apply for federal funding. Is this not putting the cart before the horse? The only vision so far of the development includes a proposal for 14 units made up of triplexes, two conventional units, and 4,000 square feet of office space. My question, I have three questions about that. Number one, why would any part of this gift, this land gift, be used for office space and simply not more affordable housing if we're going to pursue this? Number two, where this is more development than allowed under the existing land use, neighborhood commercial, can our services and wastewater systems handle that much more capacity? Will the $30,000 wastewater betterment charge be sufficient to upgrade the capacity? Like anyone on municipal services, the last thing I want to wake up to is a sewer backup simply because the systems weren't designed for that much capacity. I also don't want my taxes to increase to upgrade systems to further subsidize this project. And three, what will the added car traffic be to our already busy street? Lot 102 has only 330 feet of road frontage and it's about 160 feet deep. For an example, the triplex up on Etna Street is 100 feet deep and 80 feet wide, which means with the 330 feet of road frontage, that would be a maximum of five triplex units, or four triplex units, with driveways that connect to Glen Allen. But what about the remaining five proposed units, the two conventional and the office space, as well as the, I guess, one more duplex on top of that? What is the plan for parking, or is the plan to build fewer multi-level units? We simply don't know without a plan. It just feels like the people of Bridgewater are being asked to agree before we even know what we are agreeing to. The purpose of this, the purpose at this second seems to be only to, only the pursuit of federal funding and not necessarily, oh, I apologize, the pursuit of funding. But we can probably, but, you know, in order to satisfy that funding, we don't necessarily have to have a land purchase. I'm sure potentially a letter of intent may suffice as well, but it doesn't necessarily justify rushing this purchase. Lastly, the buyback clause. Where the project is very undefined at this stage, the buyback clause is absolutely crucial to understand before we move forward. We don't yet know how SOTA will progress with the build of these units, but even if they build the triplexes one at a time, which is unlikely, the situation could arise that the town has to buy back partially or fully complete units that may or may not fall into the definition of affordable housing. At today's market rate, individual single-level duplex and quadplex units have been selling in the Glen Allen area for between $350,000 and $400,000, according to Viewpoint. And my personal opinion is those numbers don't necessarily sound like affordable housing. In fact, if we looked at it as the entire triplex unit, we'd be paying three times those numbers, so it could end up that we'd end up having to buy back a million-dollar triplex or even a $1.2 million triplex. So my preference as a taxpayer would be, taxpayer would be that the town is not on the hook for any of this amount should a buyback be initiated, especially considering the level of provincial and federal funding compounded with tax exemption and the gift of the land. At the very least, the buyback amount should be a fraction of the market rate, and the town should not carry the risks of this project. Just to conclude, I thank you for, I thank council for allowing me to voice my concerns with this proposed development, and I have every confidence that this council will make the best decision in the best interest of Bridgewater. As a business owner myself, I understand how important it is, how important affordable housing is to Bridgewater. The economic strength of our town is dependent on the businesses we cultivate. These businesses rely on the people of the town to fuel them, and the bottom line is people need to be able to afford the homes in our town in order for all of us to prosper. I just wonder if the town can focus this ample resource on a more deserving area that would see the maximum possible benefit from the investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have questions?
Yeah. Do you need his questions? I didn't ask the man.
Nope, I think we have a number of staff here that can probably go through some of the answers.
Sure. Maybe Mike and I can pitch hit on that. First, with the buyback agreement, and that was kind of towards the end of your presentation and one I can remember the most, is that we'd be looking at, the reason why the recommendation is that we subdivide the lot and have it so that they build on, as they go, they build on a lot as they go, is that the town's buyback would be the land, not the units. So the undeveloped land, and it would be bought back at the price that we gave it at, which would be a dollar, essentially. So there wouldn't be any obligation on the town to buy back buildings, just like if it were private land, right? Like, once we give the land, we're out of the ownership, and our only interest at that point is to ensure that they do what they say they're going to do and have those agreements in place so that we can get the land back if it doesn't get built. And with the covenant agreement, if it doesn't remain affordable for an acceptable term, so if they decide to sell it five years out, that there's penalties built into that to make sure it stays affordable, or we get, it's a financial penalty so that we would get that money back so that we wouldn't have given money for private development that wouldn't be affordable. So that's the buyback. And in terms of the incomplete picture, and certainly understand the concern that it's almost, we're pitching something that hasn't been clearly defined or sketched out, and that's why the agreements are so critical, that we have those buyback agreements and that we have the covenant agreements, we have the business plan. Like, the land wouldn't even be conveyed unless there was a business plan presented to council that showed how it was fully funded. So there's no question that it's not going to go ahead, and the rezoning would have to happen, which would address the land use components, the wastewater capacity issues. In terms of parking and all that, the land use file would say how parking and everything would have to occur. So there would be controls in place to ensure that it fit in and that it was feasible, and they had it not only for capital construction but operating as well. So we want to make sure that there's a sustainable plan going ahead. And the funders, such as CMHC, which is, you're correct, it's about having the land to make the application, and the funders, CMHC primarily, would also want those same assurances before they would provide grants. So they want to make sure that it's stable and can stand on its own two feet, and also have those penalties in place if they decide to sell it to another entity who may not have the same interest in affordable housing, that it's hard to get out of that without paying those penalties.
In terms of the services, I don't believe we have any issues or concerns in terms of water and wastewater in that area. It's essentially next to the wastewater treatment plant, so there is capacity on that side of the river. Our challenges tend to be more on this side of the river. So water and wastewater are not an issue, but staff would determine that again.
At the rezoning.
And, yeah, at the rezoning. Just in terms of the other town-owned property, and I know that Nick is here, he could probably speak better to it than I can, but the town doesn't have a lot of land that could be used for this purpose elsewhere. That also has the benefits of being on the transit route. So one of the, one of the things the federal government did was they, I'm going to use the word unleashed because that's what it feels like, a lot more funding for affordable housing projects that are on a transit route. So instead of, say, 80%, it might be 90% or 95%. So they've made that condition on adding bonus funding, if you will, which also, I would hope, addresses some of your concerns about parking. So being on the transit route would reduce the dependency on cars for people who are living there who probably already are struggling in terms of financially being able to make ends meet, and so they wouldn't need to have a car. It would help them be able to use their finances for other things because they could take the bus there.
There was a question about why give the land away in such a hotspot for development, and why would council entertain that type of a ask? I can say that council has asked staff to look at ways that we, as a town, can incentivize affordable housing, because certainly housing's been identified as an issue in our community, affordable as well as housing in general, and the supply of housing for people that are moving to the area or people just looking for housing options. So in terms of affordable housing and how to incentivize that, our roles are fairly limited. So this is one particular way... So this is one particular way that a municipality such as the town could help incentivize. It, it has to be to a nonprofit organization if it's going to be below market value. So it's not something that we could open up to private developers and say, hey, we've got this land. If you want to develop affordable housing, pitch us a proposal. We'd have to sell it at market value to private. So the legislation kind of limits what we can do there. So for nonprofit, we can entertain this, this type of proposal. And as the mayor indicated, while it's in a hotspot, it's also logistically a good spot for, for this type of housing.
We've, we've donated, we've done this for a couple of parcels of land for Habitat for Humanity. So we have two, I'm kind of looking at Nick, but yeah, two, two lots that now have houses, have had houses for years that the, that the town gave to Habitat for Humanity for the same purpose, like, you know, register charity and, and, yeah. Did we get through all the, did we get through all the questions?
I think we did.
That's probably fine. Thank you very much for hearing me out.
Counsel Tanner.
Mr. Huskelson did have a question regarding why some of this affordable housing that was going to be built would be used as office space and that, that is a bit of a concern. What's the law, what's the reasoning and logic there, I guess? I think Siobhan can answer that.
That might be my question, yeah.
So those are ideas that were currently floating at this time and no final decision has been made, but the idea being that if we created office space for support, a support hub, similar nonprofit groups which provide services particularly to people who are challenged in finding affordable housing, then you would have a one-stop shopping place for residents to go and you'd have a better communication between those groups because they could be sharing office space. So for example, the Family Resource Group or I'm not even sure off the top of my head who that could be, but it, the idea being that it could be an opportunity to create a support hub to help people who are particularly in need. And I do know that a lot of those groups that are providing support are challenged in finding places to rent to their office space. So we could be a source for that as well. It could possibly be a stable income source as well from which we then, SOTA could provide our own supports so that because, as the town is aware, the town is currently providing support to SOTA, but that's on a decreased funding over years. So, and the same, there's no guarantee at the province, community services would continue to provide support in the future, financial support in the future so that we could provide those supports. So it's another way for us to have independent resources to continue with services and acquire other properties in future and continue on this prospect because it's not just the town of Bridgewater that we want to help benefit the residents here, but it's all of MODL and as well, we are also looking, we are providing services in the other, in Queens County too. So we don't, this is our, this is our first opportunity that we're trying to get on the road, but there's a lot more, there are other ideas down the road that we're hoping to accommodate as well.
Yep. Just a follow-up perhaps for Mr. Brown. So does that office, concept office, hub concept fit into the R3 zone? Or sorry, Mike, apologize.
Yeah, the R3 zone would support the office by development agreement. That's one of the other pieces I just want to quickly add around the sort of question about servicing traffic and the rezoning. The rezoning will also be going through a public hearing. So there'll be an opportunity for the public to come out and see more detailed results at that point with what engineering has to say on traffic and servicing and whatnot. So it will be an opportunity to look at all that stuff once it comes forward.
Thank you. Have another question?
Sorry. Just, just a bit on timeline. So we're expecting to wrap all of this up, sign an agreement of sale before March 15th, correct?
Your, the proposal would be to sign an agreement of purchase and sale that had all those conditions in it that would be signed before March 16th. Those conditions wouldn't be satisfied before then. So that means that you would build out a couple of months, perhaps three months to have the buyback agreement and the covenant agreement all drafted, brought back to council and approved.
Okay. Okay. Any other members of the public that wish to speak opposed this? Yeah, of course.
Evening, everybody. Thank you to councilman for everyone attending. My name is Jason Huskelson. I live at 303 Hollingsworth Drive, about 15, 18 housing lots from, from the proposed development. And I just, a couple of things I wasn't planning on getting out, but a couple of things sort of piqued my, my interest here. First of all, affordable housing, obviously a very, a very needed thing in, in the so short, all Nova Scotia and probably across Canada for, for all I know, but really applaud the efforts that are, that are going into this. Did I hear that there was a deeded access across the, on the trail? I thought I heard you say that.
No, it's not next to the trail.
Next to the trail? Okay. Because I heard four years' construction and a deeded access along the trail and I use that trail a lot for my, yeah. So when we talked about the, the land buyback, what if the land has been altered for constructed in the course of construction, like it's been landscaped or anything's been, a road's been built across it? Is there any responsibility to compensate for that or return the lands to, to, to its former green space?
Those would all be subject to negotiations part of the buyback agreement, but typically we would take it back and any improvements they made would be at their expense.
Improvements or alterations, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And we talked about penalties. I mean, I'm sorry, this is going to sound harsh, but it's a nonprofit that can't afford the land that it's built on. I don't know if the province or the, or the, or the feds are going to be wanting to fork out, so whatever penalties that are, I mean, this is just a statement, it's just something on my mind. I don't know how, how we'd be planning on enforcing penalties for, for any, you know, for any breach of, of contract. And that's just more of a statement than anything else. You know, I, I don't know if I have a whole lot more. It just, it does seem, again, I agree, we're putting the cart before the horse. It would be nice to see a plan and maybe I should have been more informed on this before I came, but what exactly would the motion, I guess no one's put forth a motion yet, but is there a wording for this, for what exactly is being asked here tonight?
So what's being asked here tonight is for council to authorize the execution of an agreement of purchase and sale for the lot, which would have conditions that had to be satisfied prior to conveyance and those conditions would be your business.
Or laid out by the gentleman.
Yeah, all those conditions, yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, again, thank you for your time and thanks.
Are there any other members of the public that wish, oh, my neck always hurts after council comes, like a baller. Any other members of the public that wish to speak against this? Are there any members of the public that just wish to speak on this? Okay. Are there any other questions from council or staff on this matter? Now, I will kind of give some closing remarks and then we'll adjourn the public hearing, move back into council and then someone will make a motion. So just in my closing remarks, I always, I want to start off by just thanking you all for coming, so putting in the effort to come to council. I appreciate that and I appreciate that the, the folks that came to the, to the podium, whether you're for or against, I recognize it is never easy to speak to council with multiple cameras pointing at you like it's nerve wracking. Believe it or not, after all these years doing this, I am much more comfortable here than standing at that podium. I get very nervous at the podium. I don't know, it's a different angle for all of you, maybe you scare me, I don't know. But I just, I just want to say it's never easy to come and speak to council, especially in a room where you don't know what other people are going to think of your remarks. I just applaud you for taking the time and exercising your right that you have to address council. As staff said, there will be another public hearing for kind of the, the next, I guess the development agreement.
The rezoning.
The rezoning. So there will be other opportunities for, for people to, to come to council. By then you'll have more information in terms of the, the actual conditions and things like that. I mean, we are desperate, like most communities, for affordable housing. There is no, there is no question. And as the CIO said, there's limited ways in which a municipality has the power or authority to, to work on this. We're not developers, so we're not going to build affordable housing. Some communities have a building that, whether it's an old school or something that the province has handed back to them and they've been able to turn that over as their contribution. So for this, the, the proposal, the recommendation being made is, is a piece of land. For Yarmouth, it was a building that they were able to give, I believe it was 650 or 750,000 dollar value that they turned over that is now affordable housing. In Cape Breton, it's different. Some, they provide all the services, some I do believe give financially.
Grants.
Give grants. So whether it's a 250,000 dollar piece of property or 250,000 dollar grant, there are, we're limited in what we can do, but there are things we can do. I just, I do want to just address, I know that sometimes we get questions as, as members of council of like, why here? Why can't, why can't you put this over here and why can't you put this over here? We don't have any ability to tell anyone where they can or cannot live. That's a, it's, you know, very simply discriminatory, so we can't, we can't do that. We can't say because you don't make enough money, you can't live on this street or that street. And I'm not saying, I'm not saying, because you said, I know that's not what you meant. I just, I'm saying, I'm saying that because over the last couple of weeks, we've had this question from folks, which is, I don't agree with this, I, I would like it to not be in my neighborhood. Yeah, that's the, the easiest way to put that is it's discriminatory, it's illegal. We can't tell someone, you're, you're essentially saying you're not good enough to live there. So we, we can't do that. Being on the transit route is huge, huge. And, you know, six years ago, six and a half years ago, it was not an option. So that is, that is what makes this piece of land very appealing. But we have to see the conditions. The council has to be satisfied with all the, all the conditions that you're going to hear in the motion that's going to be coming in a moment. And if we aren't, then it's probably back to the drawing board. And, and, you know, at this point, I have the utmost confidence in SOTA that they're going to be able to achieve those, but we don't know yet because we haven't seen them. So stay tuned for that. And again, I appreciate you all coming and taking the time for this. Did you have a?
Just a quick clarity, I guess, on timeline again. So March 13th is the date that that would be coming to us?
The 13th or the 16th?
The 13th is the count.
That's the agreement, agreement of purchase and sale would be signed prior to that. That, the application dates the?
That's correct. The deadline for the Rapid Housing Initiative, CMHC, is the 15th of March. So we would need a signed purchase and sale agreement. We don't need to have executed it, like figured out all the, all the details.
So it's March 15th.
So this would be authorizing the execution of that agreement of purchase and sale, subject to putting these conditions in there. So the conditions would say you have to have a subdivision approved, we're the landowner, so we'd have to prove that. You'd have to have the rezoning done. Council would have to agree to a buyback agreement and council would have to agree to the covenant agreement.
So we have to do that?
It's basically, it's a conditional agreement of purchase and sale. So you wouldn't have all those terms worked out before March 13th. So it's just, it's kind of like buying, buying a house and saying, I'll buy it if I can get financing, if I can get confirmation of zoning, if I, you can clean out the septic or, you know, like all those things are, it's the same idea, it's just that these conditions are a little bit more complex and will take months to, I think, work out. So this would give that promise of giving the land if you satisfy these conditions.
So we're buying time, essentially.
There's, there's a lot of conditions that would have to be met, so there's, there's off ramps if they can't be met. And so it does buy time, yes, to work those things out.
At the end of the day, nothing is being executed until council gives its.
The agreement of purchase and sale would be.
But?
But the agreement of purchase and sale has, all it's going to say is that it's subject to the following conditions being met. So buyback agreement agreed to on or before a certain date. So it's, it's just basically, it's setting a closing date of three months from now if you need all these conditions and promising it to them if they meet those conditions.
But they don't have a clue what the conditions are, really.
That's, we don't either, right?
Well, because we have to negotiate.
But it's all, it's all subject to negotiation and agreement. So if we can't agree, we don't convey. Like that's, that's.
Yeah, 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 okay. All right. Okay. Any further questions? If not, I will adjourn the public hearing, we will return to council session and is someone prepared to put a motion on the floor? Counsel Thorburn, please.
I would, worship, I would move that council for the town of Bridgewater approved execution of an agreement to purchase and sale of lot 102 to SOTA with the following conditions being satisfied prior to conveyance. Submission of a business plan which includes confirmed funding for a project, successful rezoning, successful subdivision, executed buyback agreement and agreed to conveyance agreement.
I have a second there. Counsel Caldwell, discussion of questions. We've had, we've had quite a few questions. Hearing none. All of those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried.
Yes, it was two thirds, yes.
Good, thank you. All right, we're down to planning items. You're all more than welcome to stay or not.
Where is the, is it on the website? Because I couldn't.
For the town-owned land?
You should email somebody about the deal.
Yeah. Nick will help you out there. Okay, we're down to planning items. Application for development agreement, notice of public participation meeting for 233 Logan Road. We'll just, we'll just maybe wait a few seconds, but hope it settles. All right, Mike, floor is yours.
Thank you. Presenting an application briefing from Michelin, North America, Canada. The applicant for a development agreement to construct a roughly 11,375 square meter manufacturing facility adjacent to the current 233 Logan Road site. Property is currently zone M1 industrial and would require a development agreement.
Hey, any questions or? No? Okay. Pretty straightforward, thank you. Okay, next we have initiation report, municipal planning strategy amendment, lot 102 redesignation. I was, I was waiting till you sat down before I brought that forward.
Right. So this one is to initiate the redesignation and rezoning in support of lot 102. So this would change, look to change the designation from limited commercial to comprehensive residential and change the zoning from neighborhood commercial to comprehensive residential.
Any questions on that? Kind of knew what we were, what we'd be doing because we just did it. Counsel Conklin?
Not really a question, just a comment. And I've said it before, I wish that we would have rezoned this lot a lot sooner. We would have had some development a lot earlier and who knows, that value of 234 on that lot is, I would say is probably a little understated, but anyway, better late than never.
Counsel Tanner?
No, it's my.
Okay. Other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor for sure?
Yes, I'll make a motion, your worship. I move that council for the town of Bridgewater direct staff to begin in the process of amending the municipal planning strategy, future land use map to change the designation of lot 102 Glen Allen Drive, PID 60658580 from limited commercial to comprehensive residential and the land use bylaw zoning map from neighborhood commercial to comprehensive residential R3.
Seconded by Counsel Conklin. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Down to reports and recommendations, exit 12A wetland alteration.
Council remembers, council in June of 2022 approved funds that would enable the assessment and delineation of both contaminated soil areas as well as wetland areas at exit 12A. And these areas were in the area of the connector road and where, where council looked to expand the Bridgewater Business and Industrial Park lands too. So we engaged consultants to do an assessment of the wetlands. That included looking, engaging a compensation contractor, developing the monitoring plan, a wetland impact plan, as well as making application to the Notre Scotia Department of Environment for the same. So there are 10 wetlands in the current project area and there's three that we're, we're addressing. There's a map attached to the report that shows where the wetlands are that are in question. So it's wetlands seven, eight and nine. And seven and eight are proposed to be completely altered, to basically filled in to enable the development.
the development that would occur where the Logan Road, Connector Road, and the St. Phillips Connector Road intersect, so in that area. And then wetland nine is to be partially altered, and that's all in relation to the development of the stormwater management pond. There are mitigative measures proposed, and they'll be subject to meeting the requirements of the Department of Environment for any infilling and alterations based on the plans that were submitted. And there's also a monitoring plan to ensure that construction activities don't impact any of the remaining wetlands in the area. Whenever there's wetland loss, as part of the wetland alteration application process, compensation is required to be given. So the town will be required to enter into an undertaking with Ducks Unlimited Canada to provide compensation for the wetland alterations that are being proposed to enable the development in that expanded area. The undertakings attached to the report as well, but essentially what it involves is the town providing Ducks Unlimited Canada with $32,500, and that's based on a formula that environment has for area, and a dollar value per area of wetland that's being altered. And then those funds are used to essentially do a wetland project in another area. So to compensate for it by doing a project in another area. So Ducks, Ducks Unlimited Canada would identify the area, undertake the project, be fully responsible for it, and the town's role is to provide the compensation for that wetland loss. So what's required for, or being proposed for council's consideration is that undertaking, as well as the requirement to approve the compensation of $32,500. This is an unbudgeted expenditure, and would happen in 22, this fiscal, this current fiscal year. The actual cost of the wetland alteration work to be done to, to what, to seven and eight, and partially to, to wetland nine, would be budgeted in the 23, 24 fiscal year if it's deemed advisable to proceed and, and do the work then. But we don't have that figured for you right now, just to say that we've got the approval to do the compensation with Ducks Unlimited Canada, and staff will be meeting with our consultants to determine the cost involved in doing the actual physical alterations in that, in that area.
Any questions? Counsel Conklin?
Will the proposed restored wetland be within town limits, or it's anywhere?
I believe it is anywhere that they, they identify the need for some.
I was thinking the same thing. Wouldn't it be great to use those funds to improve the cemetery pond, which is something that we've looked at years and years ago? I remember, I was still a town council, we were looking at what could we do to the cemetery pond, which seems to get shallower and shallower and shallower. That would have been a great project.
I, I think they, they would have their own technical or their own assessment in terms of, of areas that they would deem eligible for improvement, but essentially the scope is up to them.
Other questions? Counsel Thorburn?
Just a comment, on, on lot seven, it looks like we're not, we're partial seven yet. We're not taking much, but when we get over nine, we're taking, looks like more than half.
Yeah, so some of that's already been, been taken.
Right.
By the Department of Transportation as they put the connector road in. So we would be taking the dark gray area, so there's a lot that crosses the, a lot of that wetland is where the road's kind of punching through. Yeah, so they've already gone through the, the wetland alteration process with Department of Environment, and so this, this work is town, so we're responsible for doing that.
So the provincial government then paid some money as well.
I, I can't speak to the process that they, that they had to go through, but I'm assuming they had, they had to get their wetland alteration approval.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's just what I thought. Anyway, thank you.
That would, it's a good question. I'd be interested to know what the value that they contributed to Ducks Unlimited was. Perhaps we can ask in our meeting that we have.
Certainly, yes.
Would you like a motion? I would. Okay.
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater approve the execution of the agreement between the town of Bridgewater and Ducks Unlimited Canada, enabling the implementation of wetland compensation plan project acquired as part of the town's wetland alteration approval, and authorize the unbudgeted expenditure of $32,500 to implement this same agreement.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Conklin. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. 11.2 is alternative procurement collaborative research agreement with NSCC for our energy management information system.
Well done, I know that's a mouthful.
I read it from the screen.
All right, so just an aside, I wouldn't normally have done a presentation for this, but our staff, a number of my staff are going through, and other staff of the town are going through a presentation skills and accessibility workshop, so they were putting some of those newfound skills to use, creating a fully accessible PowerPoint slide. So this is, this presentation is just a summary of the report that you have, and it supports the request for the council decision to alternatively procure this collaborative research agreement with the Nova Scotia Community College for the development of our EMIS. So just a refresher, on the screen here is the schematic that sort of identifies the concept for our energy management information system, which is about sensors, so it's really about, and ultimately intended to measure and verify the retrofit savings achieved through the Energize Bridgewater Home Upgrades Program, and identify and recommend continuous saving opportunities for residents. So combined, these will allow residents to make data-informed decisions about their home energy use and further reduce energy poverty. So in the past year, in 2022, we completed a proof-of-concept collaborative research project with the Community College and Axiom Labs that provided the IT advisory services. And we successfully determined the best options for device management, the sensors we're going to use, communications architecture, and how we're going to transmit the potentially sensitive data securely across town, and data collection, where will we store and analyze that data. And then we partially determined some of that data management layer, along with privacy and security, which needs to be further refined. And we're moving on to develop sort of what we've been calling the minimum viable product, along with some field testing, et cetera. So that's sort of the next phase. So as you can see on the, I don't know if I can actually use this. Okay, so the green checks are showing what we determined through the proof-of-concept work that was completed earlier this year. And then the yellow sort of stopwatch are the partially complete, and then the purple Xs are here, what were the consumer portal, analytics, and reporting functions, and those are the pieces that need to be further developed. So, okay, so the timeline and the milestones proposed in this collaborative research agreement is about 38 weeks in total, and that's our estimate right now. So the columns with the different colors are indicating how many weeks we anticipate those, that portion of the work will take, once we get things up and running. So the device monitoring and setup, and then data management, refining those securities, getting user onboarding, user experience, et cetera. So you see that all those different milestones. The largest section being testing, milestone six, so really, once we get the minimum viable product together of our energy management information system, then doing some testing, and then moving into further field trials, and looking for 10 participants from within our Energize Bridgewater Home Upgrades Program to really test it out, and then we'll know where we're at. As part of this testing, we will be getting to looking at the My Energy Insights and the BIDJLE, My Energy Insights through Nova Scotia Power. So if we're, you know, pushing a lot of, most of the programs are incentivizing moving to fully electric, you know, electrifying home and power, home heating. And so it might, we'll be able to compare, once we have a minimum viable product, we should be able to see how our energy management information system, which is looking at more than just power consumption, will sort of stack up against what's being provided through the My Energy Insights. So that still remains an outstanding question, I know we've discussed that before, and that is still one that will be forthcoming. The team, so we have our Energize Bridgewater team, I guess this kind of, we have incoming staff sometime in the next month, he's just waiting on some paperwork, so Sathe Husain will be joining us as the senior energy manager. And then we have our data science co-op at this time, so we have our town team, and then we have the Community College team. So Dr. Wayne Grasgo, who's the applied research scientist and project lead with the Community College, so he'll be the lead on the NSCC side. They are contracting the IT consultant, so Suman Kalian, who is no longer with Axiom Labs, he struck out on his own, so he's contracting with the Community College. And then they also have their research associates and assistants from within his applied research lab, as well as they'll be proposing having about two interns through a specific science and engineering internship program called My Tax, and I can't remember what My Tax actually stands for, but anyway. We also are procuring right now, so we have a request for standing offer out publicly, it closes later this week, for experienced, certain types of expertise that we need on the IT side of things. So we have five different specific skill sets, very, very technical. And basically, we've, we're putting out for a standing offer to, to be, to allow us to say we need five, you know, sorry, we need five weeks of a full-stack developer and a user interface, user experience developer to develop X, and we'll have, we'll give them the very specific instructions, and I'm really speaking above my level of understanding, it is so technical. But, but basically, it's a temporary personnel to help us with the specific technical expertise, because there's no way we can hire a staff person who could do that type of work. So just to go back, some of the, the benefits of working with the same team from the proof of concept is all of the existing knowledge, the building, you know, that greater sort of in-house, between Community College and town, knowledge of the technical data management skills, and we continue to mitigate the, the large technical and financial risks of not really knowing exactly what we want and going out to a public procurement process for it. So that's the biggest risk mitigation that we're doing here. And also, the NSCC is a great academic partner. Part of the collaborative research agreement is that then they're able to use this in their teaching and learning, so that will continue to help grow a knowledge base around products. And this was the budget breakdown, so it's a total of $228,000, but the NSCC is contributing the $28,000 in kind, and the budget request is approximately $200,000. So this breaks down sort of the different components of it. It's all in the report, and so the rationale under the alternative procurement are, this is for prototype or first good or service to be developed, and procuring with the public money. So it is fully budgeted within the Energize Bridgewater budget, which we have funding received from Infrastructure Canada and Atlantic Canada Opportunities Agency. There we have it.
Do we own this when it's done?
We certainly do.
So if we were to license it or something like that? Because I know part of our Energize, our fully cost of transition was that there is an income stream that.
We're looking for those income streams. And in fact, there's a specific component in the collaborative research agreement that says if the Community College identifies, so this is a standard type of agreement that they do with, they work with lots of different industries, and if they identify a, I can use, but something that seems like it has a business case and it might be able to be monetized, they raise that right away. And they, not as part of, they're not for a portion of the proceeds or anything, but just to say, hey, this has potential, how can we help develop this with you?
Perfect.
Yep. It's ours.
Are there questions from council? Someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Caldwell?
Move that council for the town of Bridgewater delegate authority to the chief administrative officer to use alternative procurement practices for expenditures within the next 12 months, starting April 2023, for a research collaboration with NSCC to develop and field test the minimum viable product for the energy management information systems, system with an anticipated expenditure of $200,000.
Thank you. Second, there, Deputy Mayor Fager, further discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. 11.3 is the 2023-24 Police Commission budget, so this will be a part of our larger budget deliberations. It's there for your information if you have any questions. I was happy to see a net reduction in the cost of policing to the town of Bridgewater, so that, that was good news. Anyway, I don't know if anyone has any questions for our Police Commission members or for the CIO. Counsel Caldwell?
The, there was a small equipment purchase of $30,000, I'm just wondering what that is.
That could be, oh.
Radios?
Or the equipment that we had at the demo on to do with crime scene investigation stuff.
Yeah, the.
Yeah.
The blood spatter, right, because stuff, because we now have a expert in that. Yeah, okay.
Or, pardon me, blood spatter and analysis?
It's for analysis at crime scenes, to fingerprinting.
Okay.
Traces of other things.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah.
This is, this is CIO, so we say, please don't make me go through all the things.
Right, right.
That we want to trace.
So would we consider taking that from police reserves, or is?
So we're funding it from, from, from operating, from the operating budget as opposed to, and then in the capital, I believe, we have the vehicles being funded through some of that reserve.
Okay. And then one more question is there's, so an extra $120,000 in revenue. Please generally say what that's from?
That would be the fees for service.
Those are contracts, yeah, so.
Just more fees for service.
Yeah, contracts that we have with external organizations to criminal records checks. So, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so that'll be, again, that'll be part of, as we go through our budget process.
Yeah, and the police chief will.
The police chief will be here.
Be present as well.
Yeah. And you can reach the police chief if you have any questions about any specific items that come up between now and then. 11.4 is the 2023-24 Remo operating budget. I don't know if folks have any questions about that. Counsel Thorburn and I could certainly try to answer any of those. He's, he's the expert. I will, I will say, we are unbelievably fortunate to have the individual we have, Angela, in that role. Her knowledge and her ability to act and react, it's, I thought we were fortunate at the previous person we had in that role, and we've been just blessed to have yet another very, very capable individual, whether it's hurricanes or the extreme cold, like, she just, she's five steps ahead preparing for things, so.
She, she's really probably overqualified for this job without her qualifications.
Don't let her know that.
But she's, she's awesome to work with.
Are there any questions about that? No? Yes, please, sir.
Okay. I move that council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Regional Emergency Management Advisory Committee and approve a total 2023-24 budget of $171,800, with the town of Bridgewater's share being $21,225.58.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fager. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Next item is SoShore Fieldhouse Society Designated Communities Fund Disbursement, so just a reminder to the public that this is what happens when people come in, make a donation to the fieldhouse, they make that donation to the town, and then when it gets to a certain amount, it is then distributed by the town to the fieldhouse. So it's, it sounds like we're always giving them a grant, it's not, we're giving them back money that has been donated to them. Is someone prepared to make that motion? Counsel McDonald?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve a grant in the amount of $8,030 to the SoShore Fieldhouse Society for the multi-use facility on Glen Allen Drive under the Designated Communities Fund Program.
Okay, seconded by Counsel Tanner. All is in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. 11.6 is the recommendation for the municipal joint service board pre-budget approval for a wheeled excavator, so last week we met because, well, a very good deal came to, to purchase a 2022 Volvo wheeled excavator. So the board, the MJSB board made the recommendation, which goes to the council, the member councils, so that is before you now. I don't know if anyone has any questions on that. Counsel Conklin will be happy to answer those. Hearing done, is someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Tanner?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater give pre-budget approval under MJSB Procurement Policy Section 19.1.12 for the sole source purchase of the demo model Volvo EW160E wheeled excavator at a price of $291,688, including HST.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Conklin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. I know we're going through these quickly, I would just encourage public, all of this is available on the town's website, to go under council and council agenda. under council and council agenda, all, everything that we're, 100% of the documents that we're looking at are also there. So if you want more information on what the wheeled excavator is, that, that is there, we'll say we saved $100,000 by purchasing this one over the next bid.
Plus, we get a lot sooner, too.
Yeah, so this one is a 2022 is ready, and we can have it for $100,000 less than the 2023. So, the staff did a great job finding that.
Just a question on this one and the previous one. That $291,688, that's all based on population, so we'd only be paying, Town of Bridgewater only paid a percentage of that.
For the--
MODL would be paying some of it, Mahone Bay. Does that how it pretty--
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
But it's all based on population?
Correct. Yes, we are, we are not paying the $291,000.
Right, I just wanted to make that clear.
We're paying our portion, which is 45% or 40?
It works out to be about that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, that, thank you for making that.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay, business rising, unfinished business. Logan Road requests for partial closure. I was trying to kind of look up to give you the heads up, this is what's coming.
Okay, thank you. So this item relates to a request from Michelin to partially close Logan Road from the location where the Highway 103 interchange is being constructed to St. Philip Street. Michelin would subsequently look to acquire the former street parcel as an addition to their property at 233 Logan Road. The recommendation from staff is for council to give notice of intention to hold a public hearing on the matter during the council meeting on March 27. Additionally, for council to give notice of intention to make a decision on the related policy with respect to the closure of certain streets. So in accordance with the Municipal Government Act, council may by policy close a public street, but council shall first hold a public hearing before passing the most, passing the policy. Council will note several conditions that need to be satisfied as outlined in the report. Council may require those conditions to be met prior to decision at the public hearing or prior to the acquisition of the street parcel following closure. More detail will be presented to council in advance and during the public hearing. At this time, staff recommend proceeding to the public hearing. I'll take any questions that council may have.
Any questions? I feel like we've talked about this a few times. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Counselor Conklin?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater give notice of intention to hold a public hearing at the regularly scheduled town council meeting on March 27, 2022, sorry, 2023, with respect to the request to partially close Logan Road and give notice of intention to make decision on a forthcoming policy with respect to the closure of certain streets.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Caldwell. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. 12.2 is giving notice for Bridgewater Heritage Property Incentive Program.
So that's just a policy notice, so we'll, we'll present and council can debate at the next meeting?
I feel like you wanted to say something now. Come on.
It's okay. I had a little--
Yeah, no, would you mind, yeah, I'd actually--
I also have a hockey, okay, let's do this. Born out of the Heritage Advisor Committee's action plan--
Oh, it's a long one, okay.
The committee and staff have developed the Bridgewater Heritage Property Incentive Policy. The policy or program would provide registered property, heritage property owners with financial assistance for exterior public facade improvements or structural improvements important to maintaining the historical integrity of the property. Importantly, it would also incentivize the future registration of heritage property, properties to help with overall preservation of built heritage in Bridgewater. So we're recommending that council give first notice of intention.
Okay, so--
Thank you.
Any questions? So this is, this is just giving notice, so it's coming back to, to a future meeting. Someone prepared to make a motion? Counselor Thorburn?
I move that town council, town of Bridgewater, give notice pursuant to Section 48 of the Municipal Government Act, that at the March 27, 2023 council meeting, the proposed Bridgewater Heritage Property Incentive Policy will be considered to enable financial assistance to register heritage property owners for maintenance and preservation of this historical integrity of the town's built heritage.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fager. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item, United Way Free Transit Pass Program. So as councilor will recall, we had a request in the United Way to increase the number of passes from 2,000 to 5,000, and I think it was chen, mentioned to 6,000. And we had, I almost said council grace, we had Michael Grace come to a discussion session and explained kind of how the breakdown of that worked. And so this is back, there's, we can either make a motion to, because the request is for next year, like next fiscal year, you can make the motion to approve the increase now, or we can deal with it later.
In another month.
In another month, but it's, it's up to you, so.
Is there a benefit for doing it now?
Which just means we don't have to do it another month. Who knows, like, the next meeting could be 30 minutes.
Yeah, last year you did it, it was kind of done in a phased approach. So it was 2,000, and then another two, and another thousand. And so you, you could always take that, that, that approach and say, let's see how the year goes. What's being suggested is based on usage, they know there's a demand.
Right.
So that's why they're suggesting it be decided at once, that it'll go up to 6,000 a year, and then any unused passes, we get back at the end of the fiscal.
That would certainly give Michael some assurance that we support his recommendation at the discussion session, if we do it tonight.
Well, if someone wants to put a motion on the floor to, to support the increase of passes, the United Way to 6,000, they could do that?
So moved.
Counselor Thorburn, do I have a seconder? Counselor Conklin? Any discussion or question on that? You got the motion here, good. I should have said, welcome to Amanda, who's covering tonight. All right, we have a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. So the procurement policy amendments, you noticed that in the agenda, we gave notice on the February 13 meeting, but we're deferring this to March 13. So I'm just letting you know that. And remember, we have an added item, so this, the next item is really our second last item. FCM Conference Delegates. So this is a conference at the end of May, it's our annual Federation Canadian Municipalities Conference. In order to have our delegates recognized as voting delegates, there needs to be a motion of council. And we have myself and Counselor Tanner and Counselor McDonald that are interested in going. I don't think anyone else had let Sandra know, so Counselor McDonald, you're still good to go, and Counselor Tanner?
Yeah.
So I'll be looking for a motion to appoint them and myself as the delegates for this year's conference. Counselor Conklin?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater appoint Counselor Jennifer McDonald, Counselor Andrew Tanner, and Mayor David Mitchell as delegates for the 2023 FCM Annual Conference, and approve registration, transportation, accommodation, and other reasonable associated expenses for their attendance.
Do I have a seconder? Counselor Thorburn, you're attending as well? Do we have any staff that are going to be, we don't have to point them because they're not--
Not, not certain yet.
Okay. All right, mover and seconder. All those in favor? As opposed? Motion is carried. Great, thank you. I should have probably let people know the conference is in Toronto this year. Next year, it's in Calgary. Okay, now to our added item, which is indigenous consultation for federal funding opportunities.
Okay. So as part of exploring federal funding opportunities for some of our wastewater infrastructure initiatives, one of the criteria is that we do indigenous consultation. And we have two projects that are presently time-sensitive, and they're the High Street Water Sewer, well Sewer, for the wastewater treatment funding portion of it, and the St. Philip Street. And those are wrapped in with the water line replacement that is required to connect up to the new booster station, which services exit 12A. So the time sensitiveness around that is that needs to all kind of line up with the commissioning of the booster station, which will service the industrial park and business park and the lands north of the 103 that we're opening up. So when we, we look at the closure of Logan Road potentially, there's realignment of services and some, some issues that the booster station was upgraded to, to address. So timing's critical. We're not managing the booster station upgrades. Those are being managed by the province on our behalf as part of the overall larger project. So we need to kind of link in to, to their timelines. So the, the consultation process that we've been advised that is a new one, so we have done some consultation already with some of the indigenous communities, so we've done the Acadia First Nations, and the Sapanakiti Indigenous Consultation Process is one that we've been advised is, is new, and it has a sixth phased approach to it. So, and they're developing those phases and negotiating that with the federal government right now. So we're kind of at the beginning of that whole new process, and we're in phase one. Phase one can take up to 90 days. And then there's a phase two, and then phase three, four, five, and six. And we're uncertain what those phases entail. And while we feel the risk is low, still feel it's important to let council know that if we wait for the consultation phases to expire, elapse, we will miss the construction season. So they do note that they understand that their consultation process and the phasing of that, the six phases, may not necessarily align with our timelines. And it does kind of put us in a position where we're making a decision that we're bringing it to council to certainly say, we, if we, if we delay, we'll miss the construction season. So if we wait for the consultation process to be completed and get the, the green light that there's no concerns, then we may miss that, that opportunity, and that jeopardizes meeting up with the commissioning of the booster station and all that that has to happen for exit 12A. If we proceed without the consultation process complete, the risk is that there may be concerns identified. And while Audrey's gone through it and feel that the risks are minor, they're, it's, it, you know--
It's not zero.
It's not zero, and it's certainly not something that we can speak on their behalf about. So we can provide them with some of the assessments that we've had done. When we did the pump station 11 and the upgrades there, we went through a consultation process. So we provide that information, we respond to their, their forms, and we'll, we'll see where that goes. If they have concerns, then we'll have to look at mitigative measures. So for instance, when we did the Forest Main, it involved having an archaeological assessment and someone on site to, to be present when the work was being done, to, to see if there are any other concerns or future concerns that could arise from what was discovered in the ground. So there's that type of mitigative measures that we may have to employ, which add to the project cost. If they can't be mitigated, then the risk is that we compromise any portion of the federal funding that may go along with those components of the project. So High, High Street primarily, and it's around half a million dollars. Now, if we proceed and there's no concerns and everything's fine, and there's, we just proceed as normal and we'll go through that consultation process. But that, that is what we're bringing to you tonight, is to say we're, we're kind of in a spot where if we don't proceed, then we won't meet the timelines that we're, we're under to, to meet. If we do proceed, there is a slight risk that there could be concerns raised and mitigative measures that would have to be developed and employed during the, the construction phase. So I know it's not a great, great spot, but--
Well, it, it's, I'm, I'm a little frustrated because it's, it's the same group that's saying you have to get this work done, like you have to meet these timelines. It's that same group that's saying, but you also have to do this work. Like, it's--
One's fed, one is a federal funding requirement, so that's the indigenous consultation piece. So the, the timelines to get the work done are being set by the province for, they've got tenders, everything's--
Right.
--projects, they have timelines under the National Trade Quarter Funding Project to, to have their work completed. So we do have to align with that.
Yeah, so we really don't have much of a--
No.
A choice.
Or we're delaying, we'll probably delay it by a good year. Yeah.
So is that going to be the template going forward? Every time we deal with anything, we're going to have to--
Anything that involves federal funding, that is over, you know, and, and our wastewater is over the, the thresholds, there is indigenous consultation required. Yeah, and sometimes it's, it goes fast, sometimes it takes a longer. This is, this is a new process, and as I say, it's still being developed with the federal government, and the fee associated with it, we'll have to pay, and, and we're uncertain what that is, because that, that's still kind of being developed as well. So we're kind of at the beginning, the front end of this whole process.
My frustration has nothing to do with the, doing the consultation. I see the value in, like, doing that. It's that we're way into this project--
Yeah.
--and just being advised of this now. Like, it's, that, that part is a little frustrating that we've been years into this. Oh, anyway, I don't, I don't see any other path forward, other than proceeding and, and hoping that everything--
Yeah. Yeah, and as I say, we, we feel the risks are minor, but it's, there's still a risk there, and, and what it, as, it, what it would probably in all likelihood mean is additional cost for mitigative measures. And when we had to do the pump station, it was close to $100,000 to, to have the assessment and have someone on site to, to oversee and ensure that there were no other discoveries.
So do you need a--
Yeah.
You need a motion to pres--
To direct staff to proceed with--
Or to not proceed, I guess, is--
For the High Street and St. Philip Street sewer and water line upgrades.
Yeah. So, like I said, I don't, I don't see any other alternative other than proceeding. Just, are we, I think we're all seeing heads kind of nod.
Yeah.
While we put a motion on the floor, Counselor McDonald?
Make the motion to proceed with the project, anticipating the results of the consultation process?
We'll, we'd be to proceed with the High Street and St. Philip Street water and sewer line upgrades, and at the same time, continue with the indigenous consultation process.
Okay. So moved by Counselor McDonald. Do I have a seconder? Counselor Conklin? Questions or discussion? Counselor Caldwell?
Does proceeding in any way jeopardize that federal funding?
We've already had the conversations with the federal funders, and they understand the situation we're in. They said no. If it comes back and can't be resolved, then yes, for that portion of the project.
And we've done consultation with other--
We have. This is, this is the last--
Right. So we have done indigenous consultation on this. So this is one of the last kind of component that, if that helps. Any further questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay. That brings us to our adjournments. Thank you, folks. And again, I'll just publicly thank the members of the public that came and spoke regarding Lot 102, and I, I do appreciate, I know we weren't unanimous in that, but I also appreciate that that's, that's exactly how this is supposed to work. So I always respect everyone's views around the council table, and that's why we are effective, because you are independent and elected officials, and you can vote however you feel you have to, which is perfect, so. And motion to adjourn. Counselor Thorburn, seconded by Counselor Caldwell. We are adjourned.